Okay, I'm gonna reconvene the meeting. I'm acting President Mike Badley. Our President Troy Sanderson is stuck in traffic on Lakeville. I guess there was a big accident out there and he's not in it, but it's an accident nonetheless. So, we said to pledge allegiance, but all of you are here, so I think we're gonna say it again. So this time I'm gonna have Trustee Laboro, or Ellis, as she is.[28.34][28.34][laughter] I've known her since she was a little kid. Trustee Ellis, sorry. Ladies and the clippers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis. Now, we have our move to E, public hearing. We have a public hearing regarding Proposition 30, Education Protection Account, EPA, and the 2013-14 school year spending plan. Just open the...oh, I just opened the public hearing? I'll open that. And we have a...is this the speaker for this?
This is just for comments.
That's for comments. This, okay, so that's general. Okay, so would anybody like to speak on that matter? So we'll go ahead and close that one. Move to adoption and approval of the agenda. One second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes. This will be the approval of the minutes of Paper 8, 2014.
Second?
Oh, it's in any second. Any comment? So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so, pencils, go to H. Special recognition reports and presentations. So we're pleased, tonight we have Students of the Month for April 2014. So...what's that? Who are Students of the Month, our presenters. Don't we have a presenter?
You call the...
The week's school.
Week's school.
You call the student rep up? Yep. Kenneworth, Mile and Water, I should start with Kenneworth? Okay, we'll start with Kenneworth Junior High. So, what's that?
Just the representatives.
The representatives. We're gonna present these. Kenneworth Junior High I went to is now Target.[190.22][190.22][laughter] Sadness. Would you please state your name for the record?
Thanks. Good evening, I'm Emily White and I'm the secretary for Kenneworth Junior High. And Kenneworth Junior High is pleased to introduce the April Student of the Month, Ender Benkow.[207.24][207.94][applause]
I'm over here by the camera, watch me. Give me a one. Give me a three. Face the camera.
I'm gonna move up a little bit.
Okay, so, Ender has been nominated for Student of the Month by his team of teachers because he is very conscientious, respectful, and a responsible student. He is self-moved and very hard-working. He's a team player and extremely questionable. He strives for excellence and performs exceptionally well. He's also very polite and very considerate to others. He is described as a model student that all teachers enjoy teaching. Ender has achieved academic excellence during his two years at Kenneworth by consistently maintaining a 4.0, even while carrying academic flipp with Algebra I and Spanish 1B. Outside of school, Ender has achieved a Black Belt in Taekwondo, even though he has only been doing it for the past three years. He also enjoys traveling with his family. They've been to places like London, Australia, Canada, and Las Vegas. In addition, they travel to India to see relatives every four years. In looking towards the future, Ender plans to excel in high school so that he may attend a good university. Ender's parents are very proud of him. They have this to add. He has a very helpful and kind nature and always listens to us, does his work on time, and we hope that he will be going on the right track.
Both parents here?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Donovan Brown, the ASB President for Kenneworth Junior High, and I'd like to present the Student of the Month for April 2014, Sherri Shelby Hammond.[331.32][331.32][applause]
Congratulations.
Shelby has been nominated for Student of the Month by her team of teachers because she is one of our most spirited, positive, and energetic students we have. Mr. Stanley says it best when he says, "Shelby makes my day better with her zest for life and is a real joy to have in class. She comes to school every day with a smile on her face and friendly, positive energy to her. It's infectious." Not only that, she's an excellent student. She works hard to maintain her 4.0 GPA and is always willing to help others around her. Outside school, Shelby enjoys being active and creative. She loves art and writing, photography, playing guitar, poetry writing, and planting tomatoes. She often submits artwork and photography to the fair and has won many awards. She has written a novel, Nano Rymo, and is working on another. This summer, she will be volunteering at the Art Center with younger kids during camp. She also volunteers and played on the play. In the future, Shelby's goals include going to college to work in the medical field because she really wants to help people. Shelby's parents have this to add. As Shelby's parents, we are very proud of her and always, from a young age, she has demonstrated respect and empathy for others. She provides full attention to the person she is engaged with and makes them feel important. We feel very lucky that we get to share our lives with such an amazing, funny, caring, and loving young lady.
Shelby's parents here?
Yeah. No, there is no parent.[433.82][433.82][applause]
We just assumed that was the parents.
That's right.
Alright, so let's go to... At Lulma Junior High, can have their student representative come up?
Good afternoon, my name is Caleb Pearson, 7th grade officer. Lulabelle Sykes has been chosen as the April Student of the Month for Petaluma Junior High School.[464.86][464.86][applause] An extremely bright and talented student, Emmanuel, known as Lulabelle Sykes, is the Student of the Month for April at Petaluma Junior High School. Lulabelle is hard-working, determined, and efficient and disciplined. Earning a 4.0 while taking all available advanced classes, Lulabelle has been on the honor roll and received the Principal's Gold and Renaissance Awards. She also won first place in her 6th grade spelling bee. Teacher states, "Lulabelle is one of the best students we ever had. She's willing to take risks and go beyond the required expectations of classroom. She is a terrific role model for her peers and is well-liked by all. Lulabelle is polite, kind, sweet, and caring with a quiet sense of humor. Lulabelle is a person with many interests, especially in the field of music. Besides playing trumpet in the school's honor band, Lulabelle also plays piano and clarinet. In her piano lessons, she studies music theory at the college level. In addition, Lulabelle composes and arranges musical pieces for solo instruments and ensembles. In the 6th grade, she brought sheets of music she created for five different instruments for friends to perform. Recently, she composed and produced four pieces of music for a one-hour horror movie she video taped with her friends. Lulabelle also loves to read and write. She enjoys designing for shows, presentations, and websites on the computer. She also spends time watching old movies and collects Disney items such as snow globes and glitter bubbles. Lulabelle paints, does origami, and plays chess. Lulabelle fully embraces all aspects of her multifaceted hobbies. Lulabelle's future goals include graduating at the top of her class in high school and attending Ivy Beach University. She abides her degrees in business and engineering. Ultimately, Lulabelle plans on becoming a CEO and entrepreneur. Her mom states, "Lulabelle is great. Lulabelle's love for education makes my job easy as a parent. She does all her homework unprompted and manages her schedule without my intervention. I am extremely proud of her motivation and her accomplishments." Jacob Dunbar has also been chosen as April Student of the Month at Petaluma Junior High School.[626.46][626.46][applause] A bright and well-rounded student, Jacob Dunbar has been chosen as the April Student of the Month at Petaluma Junior High School. Maintaining a 4.0 in 7th and 8th grade, Jacob has been on the honor roll each semester and earned the Principal's Gold and Renaissance Awards. Teacher states, "Jacob is excellent, extremely hard-working, organized, reliable, and disciplined. His self-moved motivation and ambitious attitude towards learning makes him stand out as a leader and role model for his peers. We greatly appreciate his eagerness to participate and know we can depend on him to be respectful and considerate. In addition to playing clarinet in the honor band, Jacob tutored 6th grade students in the Philharmonic Band in an after-school program to help them prepare to play the National Anthem at the Giants game. Outside of school, Jacob is very involved in competitive swimming. He has won over 100 ribbons since he began swimming at a very early age. He goes to practice five days per week and attends meets one time per month throughout the year. His favorite stroke is freestyle, though excels in competing in all the various battles. Jacob also enjoys spending time with his friends. Jacob's future goals include maintaining good grades throughout high school and college. He is interested in studying aeronautics and wants to work in the field. His ambitions include becoming a commercial airline pilot or working for NASA. Jacob's parents say Jacob has always strived to do his very best academically. He works hard to be a good student and leader. We are very proud of Jacob and would like to thank all the teachers who have guided him through the years. Congratulations, Jacob Dunbar.[733.26][733.26][applause]
Do your parents, are you here? Okay, let's call up now the Casa Grande High School student rep. Make her presentations.
Hello, my name is Jessica Sainival and I am the 2013-2014 AASB President, and I am honored to congratulate Lacy Chin as one of our April Student of the Month.[770.22][770.22][applause] Lacy Chin is a senior student at Casa Grande High School. Lacy is a member of multiple clubs, including Friday Night Live, Hoppe Club, with goals that range from advocating the importance of avoiding drug abuse for adolescents to emphasizing the importance of culture in students' personal identity. She is a three-year ongoing member of the program Summer Search, a leadership program that helps students achieve personal and academic growth through experimental and mentoring opportunities. It is through Summer Search that Lacy has been given multiple study abroad opportunities in China and Japan. Lacy was also a participant in farms, leadership, learning, and brainstorming methods to further sustain agriculture and biodiversity within Sonoma County area. She is currently a mountain tamaplies watershed volunteer, clearing out invasive species in mountain dams, state park to make way for native plants. Lacy enjoys hanging out with friends, watching science documentaries, and learning phrases in different languages in her spare time. Lacy aspires to become a chemical engineer as well as to travel to many countries as possible as she can.
Lacy's parents in attendance?
Maggie's mom was there for me. I'm also pleased to congratulate Maggie Pierce. Maggie Pierce hates being bored. In order to counteract any boredom she may encounter, she keeps herself busy to the point of ridiculousness. She has tutored various students in math during all four years at Casa, has volunteered for over 1,000 hours of community service, played badminton every year, making varsity since her sophomore year, participated in the school's music and journalism programs, becoming a symponic band member as well as the page editor in her junior year. She has coached a soccer team, has been the founding member of the school's F&amp;L chapter, babysat, and even started her own membrane business in the past several months. On top of all that, she has maintained an overall GPA of 4.2. She enjoys beach trips and eating sushi with friends. Next year, she plans to attend UC Santa Cruz in major in biomedical engineering, minor in business and work on the university's newspaper. She may become a researcher, macron, mogul, or journalist, depending on how things plan out.
And now the student rep for Petaluma High School.
Hello, my name is Cara Grant and I am the ASB President at Petaluma High School, and I would like to present the Student of the Month for PHS, Shelby Varell.[986.82][986.82][applause] Shelby has taken honors and AP classes throughout her high school career, maintaining a 4.0 or above GPA. She was a gymnast competing at the state and regional level until her junior year when she quit as a result of a back injury. She has volunteered at the YMCA as a child tutor and supervisor, and at Liberty Elementary School as a library aide and a volunteer during the kindergarten playground renovation. During her junior year, Shelby participated in and graduated from the Tomorrow's Leaders Today Program, which taught her Harvard's Top 20 Leadership Qualities and steered her on the path towards her intended major. Shelby participated in Petaluma High's inaugural academic decathlon class this year and was chosen as one of the three students to compete in the honors category of Team One. Her team placed fourth overall at the regional competition in February. This year, Shelby is taking AP French IV and is co-president of her school's French club. French class and her late French teacher, Madame Wadsworth, have fueled her passion for travel, and she will begin this summer with a trip to Paris and London. In the fall, Shelby will be attending the Polytechnic School of Engineering at New York University, her dream school, and will be majoring in integrated digital media, combining her love of technology and arts.
Shelby's parents?
And I would like to present Casey Kramer as our next Student of the Month.[1097.85][1097.85][applause] Casey has challenged himself throughout his high school career by enrolling in multiple honors and AP classes. Casey is known to possess a strong academic focus and boasts a very respectful GPA. Casey is an avid outdoorsman and enjoys spending most of his free time outdoors. This past summer, Casey spent two weeks backpacking in the High CRs and two weeks mountain biking in Moab, Utah. Casey also participates on Petaluma High cross-country and track teams. He has run at the varsity level in both sports since the 9th grade, two years up in Washington, and two years for PHS. He has the honor of being the captain for the cross-country and track program this year. He raced in the California State Cross-Country Meet this year and also hopes to make it to the NCS Meet of Champions for the 1,600 meter and 800 meter races in track. Casey has received the Outstanding Scholar-Athlete Award for every PHS cross-country and track season he has participated in and was awarded the MVP Award for the 2013 cross-country season. Casey will be attending the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland, where he will study nuclear engineering and participate in Division I athletics.
We have Casey's parents here? So our president made it back, Troy. And he has a great spiel that he gives the kids. I'm gonna let him do it because he's done it every time. And it involves that plaque, so without further ado, I'm out, Troy's in.[1221.42][1221.42][laughter] I always like to take the opportunity in public to tell about things like this to thank PGN for closing one lane of Lakeville Highway for all of Lakeville highways, so I get to spend two hours on it today. I apologize for my tardiness. I do have a spiel and I try to customize it a little bit. I caught the very end of this, but I did get to see the different awards and I did get to...and I know who got the awards today. Couple things. One, please turn your attention to the wall of fame over here. You'll see that every Student of the Month going back to the year before I graduated from high school, so that's why my name's on there.[1262.94][1262.94][laughter] And that's the only reason my name's on there, I'm sure. But you'll see the wall that has the Students of the Month on there. Your name will be forever carved into a plaque and put on there. We give you a key that we share with you to the room. You can come here anytime you want to show it off. There's drinks and pizza in the back, so just make yourself at home. We'll get that key to you later, right? But seriously, that's a pretty big deal for the 8th graders that are here. I do challenge you that you will not find many duplicates on there. In other words, you will not find a whole lot of children who were 8th grade Students of the Month that then became 12th grade Students of the Month. And so I would challenge you to be one of the few that make it up there twice. And then I would also just tell you that we have 7,500...I didn't want today's number, but... About 600 students? About 7,600. Last time it was 7,518 students, so we're right in that number somewhere in our district. Eight of you showed up tonight for this, that's a pretty big deal. I don't do the air math, maybe our future cadet could tell me the percentage there. Excuse me, Midshipman, is that what I call you?
Yeah.
I apologize.[1336.14][1336.14][laughter] Could tell us the air math on that real quickly, but it's pretty impressive. You're at the 1 tenth of 1 percent or something like that. The folks that we have in this district, the children we have in this district, that's a big deal. And lastly, I would share with you that there are, for the 7,518 students, there are almost 1,000 employees who come to work every day, sometimes 5:00 in the morning to turn the lights on, sometimes 10:00 p.m. at night to turn the lights off, that take great pride in your achievement. And that's a big deal. And so, I am the child of a 6th grade elementary school teacher who I've seen cry both in joy and in frustration. Your teachers cry in joy. And so thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. And you did a really nice job, you should be very proud of yourself, so thank you very much.[1391.54][1391.54][applause] We do have another presentation. I don't know if Mike shared with you the logistics of the meeting, but if you would do us the favor of staying through at least this next presentation from your librarians, I think it's very important, something that you might glean something from. And then after that, we will take a short break because it is Tuesday night, there's things going on, and you've got college acceptances to go celebrate and more homework to do to make sure that you are able to take advantage of those college acceptances. So if you'll hang with me for just a second, we've got one more presentation, and we'll take a short break after that, is that right? Creepy. Turn those jammy tins. There we go.[1438.62][1438.62][laughter] See, I'm a little bit out of rhythm here, you gotta give me a second, right?
I got it.
It's all right.
I'm okay. So it is my pleasure to stand amongst and to present our secondary school librarians. I want to make note that Petaluma City Schools is one of the only school districts in the county of Sonoma and in the state of California that continues to have school librarians, secondary school librarians.[1471.34][1471.34][applause] Thank you to a partial tax that our very generous community funded many years ago and continues to fund.[1482.74][1482.74][applause] Yay, community. So I would like to present our four secondary librarians, and they have been working on a digital citizenship curriculum all year, getting ready to roll it out for next year, 2014-15, and especially in October, which will be Digital Citizenship Month. There you go, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Members of the board, administrators. We've been working on this all year. I think my three colleagues started planning on this last June. And the goal of this was to create a curriculum that every student in Petaluma City Schools could learn from, to both prepare them for the 21st century as well as keep Petaluma City Schools at the cutting edge of education in the 21st century. And so, my three colleagues and myself, Karen Andreessen, librarian at Petaluma Junior High, Valerie Swangren, librarian at Kenneworth, Connie Williams, librarian at Petaluma High School, and myself, Nathan Labcap, librarian at Casa Grande. Are we supposed to say "do rob" or something? Go the opposite. So, we're just gonna make a presentation of what will be a collection of lots of different lesson plans, primarily focused in October, which they'll get into. So just like any good teacher knows, a good lesson plan starts with a good essential question. And the essential question that we started with was, what do our students need to know to be digital citizens? And that's a very broad and wide question. We narrowed it down to three areas. The first area being how to be appropriate in their online school presence, the second, how to be safe in their online social presence, and the third, how to be capable users of information and ideas. And so after the rest of this presentation, my colleagues will present to you the ideas behind these lesson plans as well as the sample lesson plan itself.
Okay, so the curriculum that we have set up, I put it on petadata.info. I think you all have a bookmark on that. And we use this petadata.info as a digital... It actually provides digital resources for all the schools in the district, elementary, junior high, and high school. So we thought that was a good place to put it. If I could, I'm gonna use this. Okay, so I just added this on here, digital citizenship. And we also provided you with this overview here of our curriculum. And as Nathan said, we kind of focus on three different areas. And the first one being the workplace environment. Workplace environment, the students should get that instruction at the beginning of the year, even before October. And then in October, we're focusing on the social environment. So, let me go down here. And I'm just gonna do the junior high because I did this last year for Kenneworth, and I wanted to show you, we have the lessons here that the teachers can use, and pretty much any teacher should be able to follow these lesson plans and make a good lesson. And just as an example, last year I set this up for the teachers to use at Kenneworth, and this is what an example of the lesson would be. So this one has, it's about cyberbullying, has a slideshow here that they can just present right off of the website here. And then it has the students, what the students will be talking about and doing during the lesson. And I like to include what they should do at home, talk to their parents after they've discussed this. And then also, this one had a really good family tip sheet here from Common Sense Media about cyberbullying, and I included that on the lesson too. So all the lessons will have, you know, steps to follow and things to talk about. And also, we kind of explained in the lesson, information that they might not know as classroom teacher. So that's how we will be delivering it. And let me go back to the presentation. Oops, and... Present? Okay. I didn't go to present. That's fine. Hit present again. Shouldn't you do it? I'm not sure why. Very digitally literate here. Alright, so the on... So the online school presence, here are some examples. So we thought, well, there's some really good ways to teach them. We could give them that nice nine-page document that we all know by heart, the administrative policy. Or, like it shows there, they could really carefully review that pack, that form that they have to sign about how they're gonna behave. But of course, we thought it would be better if we actually taught it to them. So there's three topics. So for example, you know, might be fine in your personal email to email your friends and call them all sorts of silly names and make jokes, but that wouldn't be appropriate with their school email account. Again, behavior, if you look up your grade on Ares, you're not gonna turn to your friend and go, "Oh, I got A in science, what did you get?" That is not proper behavior. Or again, you're working with a group with a Google Doc and you're sharing it and you put some comments criticizing their work. And then the last one is, there's just a lot of things that students need to know, even if they've used passwords and documents and worked together. We want them to know safe passwords, and how to create certain documents, and how to work either sending their document back and forth with their teacher or their friends. So that's the information we feel is important for their digital accounts, school accounts. Okay. So, okay. Make sure I can do this all in a few minutes, half minute.
You're good.
I'm good, thank you. I think the big overarching question that we ask is not only how we can teach them, but more importantly, how do they learn? How do they live? We've discovered that kids live in the 21st century regardless of how we feel about that because we've come through the 20th century. And so they're there, and we need to be there right with them. And what we need to be doing is taking them through the path themselves. They're digital natives, but they need guidance. And that's what we do. And that's why when Karen says, "We can hand them the policy," we have been doing that every year. In their summer packet, they get a policy, and they all sign it. But no, what have they, what have they signed? They don't know. They have just, they just signed. And so our lessons have been developed to be active, to be proactive, and to help it come from themselves. So we have these topics here, face-to-face versus online conversations. We have to help kids understand how nonverbal communication using words on paper or words on a digital presence differs from on a face-to-face presentation. Cyberbullying is bullying, and we need to talk about bullying, which we are doing very well in our schools. But now we need to explain and understand how cyberbullying is different. How when you bully online, it's different from bullying in the hallway, just in the fact that it happens, it goes out bigger and wider. So those are the kinds of topics that we will be covering. Cyber Safety Security Month is what it's officially called, and has been, you know, nationally recognized for that. But we're asserting that as Petaluma City Schools Cyber Safety Month. And we've designed four lessons with four major topics that cover the face-to-face, the school presence versus the personal presence. So we have school accounts now, and we have a personal account. What do the two, how do they differ? How are they the same? And then we also move into the types of communication, the bullying aspect to it, and then a reputation and things like that. That moves us into what librarians also do, which is, do I press shift or the arrow? No, it didn't. Yeah. Oh, no. Okay. Is to, is cyber safety, digital citizenship is a line item under the arch of information literacy. And so the things that, because you have librarians here on your campuses, especially in secondary, our students are able to learn not only about cyber safety, digital reputation, and things like that, they also know how to become confident and effective users of information and ideas. They cite, they know their sources, they know how to evaluate websites. Those are the next, the next overarching aspects of what librarians teach, but what students need to know to be good digital citizenship. Resiliency is also a part of the whole process. Okay. Why do I keep doing that? Uh-oh. Oh, that's the last slide. Okay. So just very briefly, one of the things, we've all been taking care of our own sites and our own grade levels, and I've been working with the elementary school aspect of it. I've been working with McNear School. And so one of the lessons and one of the, again, the overarching ideas is that there's only four of us, and every teacher needs to become confident users not only of information but of teaching. And so the elementary schools will be getting a process where they will get, each kid will make a cyber safety journal. They will write down their exit feelings after each one of the lessons. And at the end then, they will have a document that they can, they can point to, that teachers can point to when and if they make the mistakes that they do. We did learn this, let's talk a little more about it. What you have there is some digital trading card. Mr. Frank Avila is working with me to maybe create little trading cards with one point each on it, so each of the kids, they can trade points. And they can look at, here's what makes up good digital citizenship. So those are things to make it fun. And over there is an example of a process that we're hoping that all the elementary schools and possibly all the secondary schools do, which is they create a set of their own norms. And it's a process, and it's one of the lessons, and it's one that teachers can take them through, where actually the creation of norms comes from them with guidance from the teacher. And these are the ones, for example, that the McNear fifth grades, one of their classes made, where they, they came to this on their own. And they then, after, they've got another day of working with this, and then at the very end of the whole process, each student is gonna go up and sign the bulletin, and it will sit in the classroom with every student's signature on it. And therefore, we know that they've gone through the process, they can always point to the norm that goes with it, in that I will post it in a positive manner. And when they, when they don't, we can point to it for them and remind them. So that is the idea, confident, effective, and creative users of information and ideas. So thank you very much. Is there anything else you want to add? No? Yeah, questions for us?
Is the idea that in this coming October, all the students at Petaluma City Schools will go through this?
Yes. Yes.
We have four lessons for each grade level, well, you know, grade range, let's say. So yeah, they'll go through the four lessons during the month of October. And then we have other lessons that they can go through throughout the year.
We are going to keep populating the lessons. And we will take ideas from other teachers, and we'll, as needs arise in different schools for different possibilities that need to be directed, then we'll just keep adding to that. Then during October, covering each one of the four key areas is what we're asking for as a baseline, so that we know that at the end of October, students, whether they have a journal or not, will be, we were talking about having an online, it's not a test, it's not anything, it's just an online check-in, that then every student that, at least at the secondary level, could sign in on. And we know that they have followed through, and we would have been a digital record of that ourselves. So they may, in elementary, do this physically like this, but they may also create a digital journal info, depending on the classroom. We're trying to design it for as much flexibility, as much teacher input, and as much of the ability for teachers to feel comfortable teaching stuff that they may or may not be comfortable with.
All right. So there'd be a range. They could say, "I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna do this, I'm gonna bring all my kids in, and please do it for me." Or they could say, "Well, I like this one and this one, but I'd like you to do that one."
Yeah, absolutely. There may be, may be places they're not comfortable with, and they ask us to come into the classroom, and we'll go into the classroom and do that. Part of the collaborative things that we do, so.
I just have to say real quick, Connie, I met you four years ago when you were first, at first you were doing a cyberbullying exercise. And I can't thank you all enough for picking up this piece of slack, and with teachers having so much in their plates already, and actually taking it on and getting to know you, I know you well now, with the enthusiasm that you do. It's, we all talk in this technology bingo. And I had a tutorial in my office on fourth grade this year where we had a problem with what had happened on his shared drive with another student, and trying to figure out what had happened. And it took us all, all night to figure out about type of night. "Oh my God, he doesn't know what he's saying." We go to the computer and say, "Show me." He doesn't understand. That's a very young age, but, and they're just learning. But I think, I think even with teenagers, when they put stuff out there, they don't really follow it all the way through. It's just this age they live in, we're throwing around the technology, and I just, I think what you're doing is so important, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you. That's why one of our first lessons is, what is the internet? Where does the internet live? So we do that.
And they fool us too, because they're just like, and you think, wow, they really know what they're doing. I, you know, I can't even follow what they're doing, but...
But they don't waste all the backend of...
Right. Or they don't really understand.
And with the advent of one-to-ones, and with the advent of Google accounts here on school campus, we now have the opportunity to teach them and help them become work online, workers online. And so, so, you know, the separation, the divide, having a school email account and how do you behave? What do you do? What can you do with a work environment, online life, and, you know, keeping your personal separate? So we do that. And then just to remind you that librarians, our curriculum as librarians is, does include online digital information and collaboration with teachers on that, as a curriculum. So we love taking that up, and that's part of what we...
Yeah, information is information. We don't care if it's online, or a book, or magazine, or whatever.
That's right. Thank you.
We're gonna take a two-minute break. Anybody who asks to go, I mean, who has to go, like four or five people, you can... For a reconvening meeting, we're gonna move right to public comment, council and folks. Have anybody here who'd like to speak? Can you draw a speaker card? Is this you, sir man?
Yes.
Okay. So if you've already complied with our requirements, is there anybody else who needs to speak? Would like to speak here in public comment? If so, please draw a public comment card. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Ward, and I'm a senior at Casa Grande High School.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
Back of this card, there's a whole bunch of little language of all this can and can't do. Did you see it? Did you read it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm here to inform you guys on my senior project. About a year ago, May 1st of last year, I was in a really serious car accident right outside my school. Our student parking lot is a very tricky situation sometimes. And I was making a left turn out there after my varsity softball practice. And this woman was in the farthest right turn lane with her blinker on. And so being a new driver, I trusted her that she was turning to the parking lot. And she hit me going 55 in my driver's door. And when the paramedics were like checking me out and everything, they told me that if I was hit a foot to the right more, I would've been killed on impact. So I was pretty traumatized at that moment. I knew I wanted to do something about it, so that no one else would have to go through that ever again. Except for my senior project, I knew that that is exactly what my goal would be. And I've been working with Kurt Bates and other Petaluma traffic engineers, and we have come up with two options. Option A, and, thank you. We have two driveways, and it will be making a designated right turn only into the driveways so that you'll know if they're turning right or if they're just going through. And the other part of this is, we would be making red curbs along the entrances. And there are, part of them are red, painted red, but not all of them. And I would really love all of them to be completely painted red, because some of my vision was blocked, and I know that a lot of kids, you have to inch out, and then you're already like halfway in length, so. And then option B would be, there are merging arrows right in front of our driveways. So the option B would be to remove those two arrows and push them down further so that the drivers coming through don't get confused to merge, and then we think that they're turning, there's a lot of confusion. And also with removing those arrows and moving them down, we would be making a yellow island that turns into the neighborhood on the other side of our, like Eli on the other side. And it will then make that a, it will make the whole merging process be more smoothly than it is right now. Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. There, those options are very expensive. The arrows involve having to scrape them off the concrete and re-put the pavement down, and so it's very expensive. So me and Kurt will be presenting at the city council budget hearing on May 19th to see if we get the funding for those. But right now, all that I can do is get them all painted red, all the curbs. But my goal is to really get one of these options done, because I know it will be a lot of help to our school. And also, another very expensive thing, but if CASA would like to fund it, our driveways are... Our driveways are very old and very small. They're only 15 to 20 feet wide. And when you're, like, I have a really small car, I have a Civic, and when I'm going out of the driveway and these cars are coming in, even though I have a small car, it's like this much space, like, there's hardly any room. So widening those would also be a lot of help, but it is a very expensive project. So thank you for listening to me.
We get to say our senior projects, and then we get to grade.
Yes, sir.
We volunteer to be senior projectors.
May 20, 21, and 22. You stay on, stay Thursday, grade at 9:00 PM.
Would you mind?
Oh, you'll get a minute to...
Give me a personal insult. I appreciate it.
Handwritten by me. Sweet music. It could be natural.
Yeah, it is. Great, thank you very much. No more speaker cards? None from public comment? Four activities can correspond to school board members. I'm looking at you.
Oh, yeah.
I'm looking right at you.
Yeah, so I, we attended the town hall meeting last week that we have the district leadership committee held to, invited the public to come speak about the local control accountability plan that our committee has been working on since last October. We had a good-sized group come. There were, unfortunately, only like, you know, a handful of parents who weren't also involved in the district in some matter. And, you know, from what I've heard from neighbors and others, is our schools did advertise this via email, via robocalls, newsletters, and a variety of things, been up all over town. But I think parents are thinking, local control accountability plan, I have so many other things on my list of things to do. So it was unfortunate that we couldn't get more parents, but we did have a great assemblage of teachers and other staff who came. And we went through, and I just wanted to, we're gonna see it here at the board, June 10th, is that right?
June 10th.
But wanted to let you know that the process is working, and that it's a, and to share with the public, it is a living document that we will continue to get feedback on and make adjustments to as we go forward. So that was some of the questions that had come up last week, just wanted to share.
Well, that's great. Well, thank you very much for taking that and actually being in the meeting. Appreciate it. And we have our various athletic events. Was there anything else that anybody wanted to share of the grade or good?
We, a number of us, the Community Achievement Awards.
Yes. That's what we're covering.
That, Phoebe and I were presenters, and it was good. Steve was a presenter. In fact, Steve was almost the emcee, ended up, didn't have many jokes, but kind of worked it through.
It's hard to teach that.
Yeah. Mumbling names, he was good. So, but yeah, it was, it's wonderful to see, and you're just in awe of these kids going to school and all they've done. I would've pretty been up there, right, Steve? You know, kids that were 4.6, 4.7, I was like, oh my God, these kids. And they were, they were going to pretty impressive schools. And one young lady had, her choices were like three of the top schools on the East Coast, you know, decisions, decisions.
Three Ivy League schools, that's, her three finalists just got decided, obviously, by May 1st, but that was very impressive. That's great to hear.
Yeah. None of them do, um, what we're saying today, but...
I don't know how that happened.
Yeah, that's amazing. Actually, they see that.
Okay. And then I was gonna share that I also had an opportunity, I was invited to go to the debate judge.
Oh, yeah.
My government class. Did you do that with Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I did it too.
Oh, you did it as well? Wasn't that fun?
It was really fun, yeah.
I would always appreciate an opportunity to, I only got that because my son's in one of his classes, so I hope that.
Oh, I got it. Oh, God, he gets it. Isn't it?
Well, I just, okay, I just want to make sure. Throw it out to everybody to make sure, because I actually had a blast. And I don't believe I ended up doing a 40-minute question and answer with the kids.
Well, I shared, I shared the podium with David Glass, the mayor, so that he got a lot more questions than I did.
So all I know is Ray, the food guy, got some questions for you. That was pretty much the big one.
I'll tell you, the agenda's all, I thought he was. The deputy chairman of the office, Rob. He'll be back for the end of the year report. We figured it's too late for a mid-year review.
I'm his biggest defender, so I'll do it. So, very good. Anything else you want to add to that?
Oh, I was on KTV. Lovely.
And Troy, you're the last one, we both.
Did your people call my people?
Your people are calling my people. I'm working on myself dealing with this tomorrow.
I think I have the tape, so I will. But I will, I will very much support that, as long as I'm not coming back. Maybe this is how they will have it. All right, so very good. So reports activities, let's move on to the consent agenda by consolidated motion. We didn't have any changes to the.
No. Nope.
Well, then let's fire away. Second, the economic consent agenda. No? All with favor?
Aye.
That one is done. Oh, whoa, wait a minute. Did I jump? No, I didn't.
No, you did before.
No, okay, employment report. Let's move to administration and resources. Employment report. We need to. Discussion questions concerned?
I think you want to introduce this to somebody.
Yes, this would take away one of the pleasures of my.
I'm paying for pure entertainment.
It's always entertaining. Um, but, but tonight, I am pleased to introduce to you, I know you already know, um, the new principal of Mary Collins at Cherry Valley Charter School, and the newest member of our district leadership team, Fran Hensel. So, so Fran, most recently was at Mark West Union School District, where she was the principal of, right?
She is the.
Is, that's right, you are the principal of.
I'm a faculty.
For the past three years, right? And, um, she brought a team of teachers from her district a couple of years ago to Mary Collins to sort of look at their, um, their student-centered approach, and was so impressed with them when the opportunity came. She joined on, or she applied, and is thrilled to be joining them as we are thrilled to have her here. So, Ms. Fran, I don't know if you want to say hello or.
Hello.
Anyhow, welcome here.
Thank you.
It's great to have you.
Thrilled to meet you. Thank you very much.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I suppose we should make it official. Should I have a?
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
You're in. Thank you very much.
We're glad. Okay, item two, declaration of need for fully qualified educators. And, you know, I'm not going to put these together, because, since we have two different districts. And interestingly, as I read the resolution, very specific that we have to, uh, a roll call vote, apparently, on this, or that we vote in public. And let's just knock these out separately. Uh, declaration of need for fully qualified teacher educators in Pelham City Elementary School District for 2014, 2015. I will take a motion on that resolution.
Second.
Okay, and just for.
Right, it, it, we actually do this annually. Um, our hope is that we don't use this, because we like to hire fully qualified teachers. But if the need arises, there are, you know, as you're aware, there are some positions out there that are difficult to fill. And every once in a while, and, um, like I say, we try not to do the, need somebody on an emergency intern or something like that. And without this declaration, we can't do that. So, um, I come to you every year and say, "Would you please give me the authorization to do so if it needs be promising you that it will be my last resort," as, as we always try to get, and have been very, you know, 97-point-something percent of our teachers are fully qualified and certified. It's just in a few tough areas, with, actually, they're all credentialed. We have some problems with HQT in some areas, but.
Okay, so it's a placeholder on in case we need to. That is what this is, we do it every.
Right, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And remind me, these do come back to us again, don't they? When we, if we actually do have to pull the trigger on that, do they not come back to us?
Yes, yes, we would come back to you to get permission to, yes.
So really, all you're doing is asking for permission to potentially feature.
Yes.
Ask for permission.
It gives us the right to, to actually go through the process if we need to.
Who says that school administration is not complicated?
I never have said that.
Any other, other motion or second? Do I have any questions on that?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? And then we're just going to go right to number two, which is the same exact thing, but for Pelham, the joint union high school district for the same 2014, 2015. I'll take a second. Is there any questions relating to that?
So I won't repeat what I just said, but yes, it's the same thing.
Thank you very much. On confirms it's the same thing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Five oh? Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm just going to stand here for a moment.
Okay.
Just for the next.
Well, why don't we move on to something else where I might want to talk about? Resolution 131428 of Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts, County, Sonoma, State of California, honoring the contributions of teachers of quality education, and declaring the week of May 5th through 9th, 2014, as a week of the teacher.
All right, and so, again, another one, um, a wonderful thing that I get to do. Um, we have, um, really amazing teachers in our district. They are supportive, they're creative, they are dedicated to the work they do. Um, one of the greatest pleasures of my work is getting out into the classrooms and the schools and seeing the learning and the, um, that's going on between teachers and students. Actually, was out, um, was at Pelham High School today myself with, uh, Mr. Bowman, uh, looking at our, judging a debate. Spent the morning out at Hen Grove, got to all the classrooms out there, and just, um, actually had a little, she was a first or second grader reading to me. Um, it, it just, it's just amazing. And none of that is possible without the wonderful teachers that we have there. And so, um, and it's, it's just that we would like to recognize and honor our teachers for all of the work that they do by, uh, recognizing the week of May 5th through 9th as the, um, week of the teacher.
Great, good. Comments?
Yes. Um, I noted in particular in this year, working on this local control accountability plan, that all the stuff that, um, is, you know, comes at the teacher throughout the year. This year, we have new funding formula, we've got the Common Core, state standards, all this stuff. And yet, they're in there just doing their thing and, you know, adjusting as needed. And it's just, it's amazing to see. Um, so, very impressive. Just want to say that.
I'm, I'm impressed on both campuses, um, frequently, especially at the high school, but it goes to junior high and elementary that Sharon had to run. And I'm amazed at how often I see the teachers outside the classroom doing things and staying involved. And I know my children who went through Pelham High always felt like the teachers had open doors for them, and they just seemed to do a lot of extras. And you don't recognize it, because they're not patting themselves on the back, but, but they're out there and around, which I think is a real testament to the whole team, so that they feel, you know, needed and included, and, and the kids interact with them really well. So I, I think that's something we always want to encourage.
Any other comment? I would like to know what activities are we going to have planned for the week of teacher? So we're going to.
That hasn't been determined yet. It was determined of the sites. You know, each of the sites will do something individually. Um, and, um, I don't, I'm not.
Talking about it on Thursday.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
I'd sure like to hear about that, because maybe we can participate.
But, yeah, uh, usually get some, check in with all the schools and find out what they're doing. And, and they've always got something, um, to, to recognize, honor, and celebrate.
Like dinner on Bowman and Caccino or something?
And actually, I, you know, this morning, uh, Steve and I met with a citizen, and, uh, it was just another opportunity of somebody telling us how happy they were with, uh, you know, the teachers that their children had, and how lucky they felt to be in our district. So I think we're really blessed.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would agree.
I appreciate it. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to.
Were you going to vote?
Excuse me.
Hey, you, you, did it stay up there? Well, you excuse me, you know, I, I thought last time I was here. And you're speaking, I listen. Fair.
I heard that one, that's all right. I'll wear that. All those in favor of, uh, this resolution, 131428, making, uh, May 5th through 9th, week of the teacher?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Very good. I'll afford to hearing about the celebration. Moving on to business services, I'm going to look through here to what we have. The whole time we have purchase orders. Do I have anybody who has any potential conflict of interest on, uh, purchase orders for approval? I'm looking at Mr. Badley, and this is Alice. Do you have any conflicts of interest here that we need to?
We need a motion?
Just wanted to make sure before I took that motion, I didn't get it from a conflicted person.
Oh, conflicted person.
No conflicts? All right, I'll take a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Purchase orders are as presented. And I'll ask the same question of the list of expenditures, item six. Do I have any conflicts that need to be heard of?
I do.
Okay, I'll take the motion.
Second.
All those in favor of the purchase, uh, excuse me, the list of expenditures, item six?
Aye.
Aye, aye, closed? Six goes. All right, item seven. Expenditure authorization, Proposition 30 Education Protection Account. I'm just going to read this, and I'm going to ask for a little bit of explanation, if that's possible. Uh, Prop 30, the Schools and Local Public Safety Protection Act of 2012, approved by voters on November 6th, 2012, temporarily increases state sales tax for all taxpayers, personal income tax rates for upper-income taxpayers. The new revenues generated from Prop 30 are deposited into a newly created state account called the Education Protection Account, or EPA. Now, we did have public, uh, prior to me arriving at this meeting, we did have, uh, a public comic hearing on that, and I, do we have anybody make comment?
No.
Okay. All right, so, uh, we are looking for, Steve, Mitch, a motion to approve it?
Yes. Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, yes, discuss. Do we not discuss it at the beginning?
We did not.
We did not.
See, acting president, open and close.
We did not.
Discuss, yeah, I heard.
So, um, this, uh, proposition that the voters passed in, uh, November 2012 required this separate account, but it didn't provide the district with any additional money. It just shifted it from one place to another. Um, this proposition basically precluded horrific cuts from happening. Um, and so with, with this proposition, they required us to do a public hearing and prove to the public that we are not spending any of these dollars on public administration or anything like that. So what the district does is shift our regular teacher salary from one account to the other into this account. And basically, that's what this transaction is. Just an accounting shift.
Okay.
Comment?
But what was the overall point of it?
Well, it's.
Accountability, right?
It's accountability.
How's this, how's this make us more accountable? By putting a different account that we still can draw the checks on, right?